I will call our meeting back into session at 7:07. And our first item is to do our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag?
I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right. Tonight, we don't have an invitation. And Ms. Flores, an instructional call.
Mr. Daniel Gallagher?
Here.
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 President.
Ms. Melisian Myers?
Here.
And Mr. Ellen Mappel-Gerdt?
Here.
That presence, Mr. Dylan O'Neil.
All right. Now, we have our superintendent spotlight. President Montemayor, board members. I'd like to call our high school principal, Dr. Pretty, up to the podium to introduce and recognize some wonderful students.
All right. Thank you, Board President, Little Elm ISD School Board, and Mr. Gallagher, for this opportunity to present Students of the Month for February. We will only have one student tonight. One student had to reschedule a baseball game due to the weather, so we'll recognize him in the next board meeting. And that was John Matier. All right. I would like to ask Ms. Emily Mills to come up to the podium. All right. I would like to recognize Emily Mills, a senior at Little Elm High School. Emily is an outstanding student. She has challenged herself with upper-level courses throughout her high school career. She's currently taking three Advanced Placement courses, including Statistics, English 4, and Biology. And she's also taking a dual-credit government class and an Advanced Engineering class. While carrying a challenging academic load, Emily participates in Hope Squad, and she also plays clarinet in the band. And she is also a member of our National Honor Society. She participates in several student organizations, including Academic UIL, the Technology Student Association, Student Council, and When We All Vote. And in her free time outside of school, she likes to read, play the clarinet, and volunteer. Emily was recently recognized by the College Board for being a commended scholar. Emily earned this recognition by taking the 2020 Preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, known as the PSAT, during her junior year in October. Based on her scores, Emily demonstrates outstanding potential for academic success. Emily has also made many positive impressions on her teachers who offered these accolades. Mrs. Gaston, her AP Biology teacher, stated that Emily is a brilliant and top-notch student, but even more importantly, she is a great person. She is kind and considerate of others, and she is a leader in class and always is willing to help others. And the world could use more Emilys. Ms. Chamberlain is Emily's AP English teacher, and she stated that Emily, as Emily's counselor, her AP English 4 teacher, and her Hope Squad sponsor, she had many things to say. In every single way, she has seen Emily excel. There's nothing she cannot do. She is kind, level-headed, and just an all-around awesome student. There's never been a time when she has not been impressed with her work ethic. Ms. Chamberlain said, "I do not know how she keeps up with her heavy schedule and remains so calm. You never see her sweat. I'm truly a better person having learned from her, and I'm very lucky to have gotten to know her throughout her high school years and cannot wait to see what she becomes." Emily is a lobo for life, and having attended Little Elm School since kindergarten, after graduation, Emily plans to attend college and major in biomedical engineering. I would also like to recognize at this time Emily's family. She's here with Charles and Kim Smith, her parents, and also her little sister, Isabella. Please stand so we can recognize them. And I have the certificate for Emily. They're going to take a picture of you. Do you want to take a picture, Mom?
Mom, if you want to take a picture.
Emily, congratulations. And Mom and Dad, thank you so much for being here. Thank you for raising such a great young lady. So, thank you and congratulations. Dr. Pretty, thank you so much. At this time, we'll move to report to the superintendent, and I would like to ask Dr. Cindy Mecca to come to the podium to do an update on curriculum and learning in the district.
Good evening, President Montemayor, Superintendent Gallagher, and board members. This is my curriculum and learning update for the month of February.
Emily, y'all don't have to stay.
Unless you really want to.
So, the first part of the board update will be blended learning and Little Elm ISD. And as you know, we have the Math Innovation Zone Grant that we were awarded two years ago, and it's a three-year grant. And so, we are... Last year was our planning year. We did a lot of training, and this year is our first year of implementation with the grant. And so, we have been implementing with first... With Kinder and third-grade teachers, sixth-grade teachers this year. Next year, we will be adding first- and fourth-grade teachers and seventh-grade teachers. And so, they actually started their first of three days of training today. And so, we had their first training with Education Elements, which is the partner that was approved for the grant throughout the duration. And so, they are beginning those trainings with them, and then they'll have trainings the rest of the spring. And then in Summit, they'll also have some trainings. And then, they will start implementing the blended learning in their classrooms beginning in the fall of 2022. And then, I wanted to give you an ESR funds update. So, as you know, we had ESR 2, ESR 2 Supplemental, and ESR 3 that was granted to us by the state. And we continue to get new guidance on this. They've just recently, about two weeks ago, came out with new guidance of how we draw down the funds, which was different than the guidance that we had before. And so, it's constantly a changing event with this money. And we actually got an additional $1.8 million dumped in there that we hadn't expected a couple of weeks ago. And so, I'm going to go through that. One of the things that we did do as part of the requirement is we did a community survey. And so, every time we go to spend money, we make sure that it is something that we had represented on the community survey. So, just to refresh and to give you new amounts of our drawdowns from the state, ESR 2, we received... We have $960,736. And we were not really spending that money because we needed to see... We were told that that would be what they would be recapturing for the low attendance last year. Remember, they're going to give us something, but they're going to take it away somewhere else. And so, this is what I warned y'all about. And so, we have spent very minimally out of that. It's also very tight what you can spend this one on. And so, we have so far just spent it on some additional PPE that we needed for our campuses. Then, we have ESR 2 Supplemental, which not every district in the state got, but we did receive that based on the needs of our students. And that was a surprise to us at the beginning of the year, and we received $2,934,012. And this money has to be spent by September 2023. So, we have another year and a half. So far, we have spent $59,996 on that. We have done... We purchased Math 180 for the math intervention for students that failed STAR at the middle school level. And then, we've also purchased the Thinking Maps Trainer of Trainers, which... The training was supposed to be during the snowstorms, and so, we actually had to move that. And so, we will be catching up with that during May. So, we will have all five days of that training in May. But it'll be for the same teachers, and that will be just to bring back Thinking Maps into our schools. So, we'll have Trainer of Trainers at each of the campuses. And then, ESR 3 was $4,404,958. And Dr. Glover said this is the area where we had an additional $1.8 million dropped. And so, that deadline is not until September 2024. But we have spent the most money out of there so far. We have spent $302,142. And we have encumbrances for right about that same amount for the School Day tutors and the After-School tutors. That's how we are paying for the House Bill 4545 tutors for the students that failed STAR last year. And so, we also have arranged for some instructional leadership training that's coming up, and we are purchasing math resources to help us with the MIS grant implementation. So, we still have quite a bit of money on the table, if you look at that, what we've spent so far and what's coming. And part of that is because we were waiting on guidance from TEA on how we could spend it and what was needed to be spent. So, we have really been thinking and working with our other departments about allowable costs. And so, with ESR 2... ESR 2 and ESR 3, we want to spend those first. And so, what we're looking at, we will be bringing to you after we get quotes. But we have Promethean boards at every campus except for Preswicke and the high school. And so, a $650,000 purchase, which is allowable, that is one of the big ticket items that the federal government wants us to spend it on, is our technology and devices. And so, we would be looking at approximately $650,000, and that would make us equitable across all of our classrooms with Promethean boards. And so, the Technology Department is... Will be working on that quote for us. We do know that when we order them, after it's... If you so choose to approve the expenditure, when we order them, we won't get them by June. They'll probably come in sometime summer or fall. So, it's going to be a delayed purchase on that. But we do need to get that quote in so that we can go ahead and get them ordered because there is a delay on the shipments of those. So then, that leaves us with the remainder of the ESR Supplemental. And what we're looking at, this is... This has to be spent by September 2023. And as I mentioned during the annual report, not only are we seeing a deficit in academics due to the pandemic and the unschooling that occurred during that time in and out with students that were here or, you know, were at home, possibly had COVID, or were close contact in and outs. We are also seeing that in behavior. And so, what we are planning on doing is hiring temporary contract workers with that money. That would be three behavior interventionists. That would be for the life of the grant. So, this first grant in September 2023, so their first year, we would pay out of the ESR 2 and ESR 2 Supplemental. But we would like to have them for two years. And so, we are planning on doing a two-year temporary contract for the life of the grants for three behavior interventionists. And that would be right at about $380,000. And that includes salary-related costs. And so, that is something that we are planning on going ahead and taking care of so that we know that if we can intervene with students at an early age and work with the teachers on skills that will help them work with the students that are having behavior issues, that that will help their academics in the long run, as long run throughout their academic career. And so, we do have plans to use right about $380,000 to... Don't want to use the word "hire," to temporarily contract with three behavior interventionists that will work in our campuses. And we're looking primarily at the elementary campuses because that's where we're seeing the majority of the one-off behavior issues that we're getting. And then, instructional resources and summer school, those are really to be determined. We won't really know our total summer school population until we get the STAR results for elementary and middle school. And so, but we do have plans. Ross and I have worked with plans. We've already talked with the principals about it. We are in the back of our minds, based on last year's STAR results, thinking that we have to double the size of summer school to get us through these next couple of years. And so, we have on reserve two campuses that we can run elementary summer school. We would separate middle school summer school from high school summer school and run it separate for the next couple of years. And then, high school, we already know the number of students that lost credit during the pandemic that we need to catch up and try and get them graduated on time. So, we will be running that summer school as well as any EOC failures. So, we are planning on... On paper, we are planning on doubling the size of summer school in order to work with those students. Also, the way we have summer school set up for this summer, that would take care of our 38 mandated hours of HB 4545 that we've been talking about. And so, but that number, we won't know until we actually get our STAR results and our report cards finalized at the end of the year. And then, you're going to see that expenditure again in ESR 3, just like you do for the three behavior interventionists, because we will continue with that lengthy summer school plan in order to make sure we get all of our kids caught up within two years. Then, we have allotted another $1.3 million for the School Day and After-School tutors that are temporary contract workers. And then, this evening, in the above $50,000 expenditure, you will see that we are asking for approval of $470,000 for a Solution Tree PLC contract. And PLCs is one of our cornerstones. We have three cornerstones of the district to utilize PLCs to teach the standards and to teach high rigor and high relevancy lessons. And PLCs is the way that everything else can happen, because that's where you can talk about students, where you can talk about the plans, where you can talk about the standards and what needs to be taught and the best way to teach it, where you can analyze assessment results. And so, it can truly be a driver, but it's also one of the hardest things to implement and make part of your culture. And so, we have been talking with other districts and working with Solution Tree on an actual contract for this. And it would allow us to have almost a Trainer of Trainers model for PLCs, where we would have six to eight teachers trained at every campus in true PLC leadership, as well as the campus principal. And that is six days of training. And how we have that set up is on the professional learning days in the fall semesters, that that cohort group of 71 would come with our trainers and would be working on that true PLC learning. What we've done in the past is that we would rent charter buses, and we would take two or three charter buses down to San Antonio, and it's a three-day conference in the middle of the summer. But what happens is it isn't ongoing. And so, I'm sure you've all been at trainings that you've been really excited about, and then when you come back, the work happens, and you don't always implement everything that you want to or that you thought about during that conference. And so, that's what we have seen. While we are making good progress with PLCs, it's not quite as far as what we want it to be. We do come back around to it in our Learning for Leaders once a month, but this will help us get a jumpstart on that. Another part of this contract is to have embedded coaching for all of our PLCs. So, picture an elementary campus that has six PLCs. And on one day, we would have one Solution Tree coach come, and they would sit in each of those grade levels, professional learning communities, and they will work on that with that grade level's PLC for their next steps in pushing themselves forward. So, much like our instructional coaches are working with individual teachers to grow them, this coach would work with our PLCs to grow our PLCs. And then, the last piece of this contract is a coach for each of our principals. So, it would be once a month that they would meet with their coach and plan their next steps for moving their schools forward as a PLC. And so, it is a large contract piece, and I would tell you that without this ESR money, it wouldn't be something that I would ever be able to bring forward. But I'm comfortable doing it because it's a one-time thing. It doesn't have any other lingering costs after this. And then, we... The instructional coach training with Instructional Coach Group, we received our initial quote for next year, and that could be something that can be paid out of ESR 3 funds as well. And so, that's kind of where we... We do have a plan for the money, but as you can see, there's still in that ESR 3, that accounts for about $2 million. And so, we still would have $2.1 million to plan for for the next couple of years. But it's a good... It's a good problem to have, this extra money. It allows us to be very creative, and it also allows us to do some things that we wouldn't normally be able to do with instruction. So, professional learning update, we have our summer summit. And as I told you last month, we've... Are moving that from May to July based on feedback from our teachers. And so, we will be running three days of summit. So, we're just now... Because it's in July, we're not quite as far as we normally would be at this point. We've just asked for a call for proposals, for teachers to start coming up with ideas of what they would like to teach. And so, we have those in by April 15th, and then the Curriculum and Learning team will go through all of those and choose the events during summit. We also have Mindful Mondays that we started this year. And so, every Monday, pretty much, we are doing a professional learning after school or before school for our teachers. And so, here are some of the topics that we did in January and in February, and then upcoming in March, we have three sessions planned. And then, in Learning for Leaders, that's our Learning for Principals, we've been really focusing on professional learning communities. And we are starting this month a book study with all of our campus instructional leaders, How to Coach Leadership in a PLC. And then, Solution Tree, this is what I spoke with you about during the ESR funds. So, that's going to be the Guiding Coalition, which is the Coaches Academy, Trainers of Trainers model, the six-hours PLC refresh during fall kickoff for every staff member, embedded coaching for our PLC teams, and virtual coaching for our principals. And then, these are the 70 teachers that would make up that Trainer of Trainers. And then, the six-hour refresh during fall kickoff, all of our teachers will have a six-hour training so that they all have the same understanding of what a PLC is and how it should operate. And then, the embedded coaching and the virtual coaching that I have already spoken about. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Dr. Mecca.
Thank you.
Dr. Mecca, thank you very much. And you're still up?
I'm still up.
All right.
So, now, we're switching to my next presentation, which is on the House Bill 3 pre-K update. So, as you know, we applied for a waiver when two legislative sessions ago, they called for, in HB 3, full-day pre-K for every eligible four-year-old. But knowing that many school districts did not have the facilities to do this, they were... We were allowed to apply for a three-year waiver, and that waiver is up this year. And we did, during the planning year of 2019-20, which was year one of our waiver, we did a call for partnerships, and the board voted that we would do it in-house by adding one full-day pre-K a year. Okay? So, in 2020-2021, we opened our first full-day pre-K class at Oak Point in the bilingual program. And then, in 2021-2022, we opened our second full-day pre-K at Brent. And then, in October, we went over our 22-to-1 cap on those classes, and we opened an additional full-day pre-K at both Oak Point and Brent, but at 11-to-1, because we did not have paraprofessionals for those two classrooms. We had the teachers, because we were able to move teachers from within the bilingual program down to pre-K. But we capped those at 11-to-1 so that we would not have to come back for another FTE for the two paraprofessionals. So, due to the pandemic, we were supposed to move out of here, Zellers, into the Lakeside Center for our new administration buildings over Thanksgiving and Christmas break, and that did not happen. And it's due to construction supply and the delay there. And so, now, we are expected to move over there during the summer. But because we did not vacate this building, they weren't able to start construction on it to convert it back to an Early Childhood Center. And so, we had planned to open in August 2022, and that now is going to be delayed till August 2023. But thankfully, TEA, this is something that is happening across the state, because everyone's three-year waiver was ending this year. And so many districts are trying... Have been trying to build these Early Childhood Centers, but the construction delays are statewide. And so, recently, TEA has released a renewal for the exemption waiver, and this will be available in July. And so, they will allow us to renew up to three years. We won't need the full three years, but I've been speaking with TEA, and I will be bringing to you in March to go ahead, and we'll renew for another three years, just in case something happens. And we don't... They've... TA says that if you ask for a one-year waiver and something happens, you have to open full day regardless. So, we will... We have started going through the steps needed for that three-day waiver so that we will be able to bring you the... To vote in March. And so, it's very similar to what we did before. We had to call for partnerships again, for community partnerships. We held a meeting on February 16th, but no possible partners attended that meeting. We have a call for proposals out from partnerships, and those are due on March 4th. And then, we will review the proposals with the rubrics that we've written the week of March 14th after the spring break. And then, we plan to bring to board the vote to renew the waiver exemption at the March Board meeting. And then, when it opens in July, we would be applying to that if you do vote that way. And then, this will allow us to open full-day pre-K in 2023. So, when we move out here in the summer, they will begin converting this building to the Zellers Early Childhood Center. So, during the 22-23 school year next year, we only had to add one class. So, we added the two that were our full at 22-to-1. And because we added that the class, the other two at 11, there's two teachers, two classes. there's two teachers, two classes. So TEA says that if we combine those, it's really like 22. And that fourth class that we added this year will count as long as we grow students up into that program, which we should not have a problem because we still have kids applying for the bilingual program. So that will actually count towards our necessary adding one new class. And then the school year 23, 24 is when we would open Zellers to all eligible four-year-olds. Currently, we have 10, 10, we would have, with our current staffing, we have 10 teachers. But this building and the two wings that we're converting will be right at about 20 classrooms. And then, as you've seen in the bond presentation, if, if the bond gets approved, we would be moving eventually childcare out. And then that would give us another 10, 10 to 12 classrooms over in that wing to eventually grow into. So that is all I have for the House Bill 3 pre-K update. Does anyone have any questions at this time?
I just want to understand.
Yes, ma'am.
So the partnership call was for February 16th, a couple of weeks ago.
Yes, we, we did a, we did a, about a month ago, we did a call for partnership proposals. But then we wanted to have a meeting that we could teach them about what the partnership was and how to complete the application. When we did this three years ago, we had two private pre-K centers come to those meetings and submit. But this year so far, we didn't have anyone come to our instructional training meetings. And to date, we have not received any partnerships. So if that continues to be the case, then we would just recommend to you that we would continue with our same method that we've used the past two years of adding growth to our program by adding a class a summer, a year.
Dr. Mika, I think it's also important to point out, when you do partner with someone, you know, funding goes with that student.
Yes, we have to pay them.
We, the district pays whatever partner we would partner with.
Correct.
So the waiver would be for three years?
Correct, but we would only plan on using it for one year because our building will be ready, right, Rick?
Yeah.
Yes. The building will be ready, and we would be able to move in summer of 2023.
So we really only need it for the 2022, 2023 school year.
Correct. But I'm going to be very conservative and ask you to be very conservative when we bring this to you in March to approve us applying for a three-year waiver. Because I never dreamed that we wouldn't make this waiver to begin with. Not even when the pandemic was, you know, hot and heavy in 2019 spring, I mean, 2020 and, and beginning of last year. I really thought we were going to make it. In fact, Rick's team and my team, and we have been in meetings with the architects ready to start on this building. So it's the delay in construction supplies that's caused the delay. Because we couldn't move out. So, but thankfully, TEA has afforded every school district this opportunity, but only if you already had the waiver.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, we assumed, I mean, we had a year for Lakeside, we don't, that's not going to be done. So we'll have a year to get this building to be done, so.
Correct.
Assuming.
Yes. And this, this building, they were going to be able to do it originally in six months. And so, you know, a year gives us extra time for, for anything. But once again, if, if it comes down to it and we have that three-year waiver, we're kind of covered. Then we would have to just continuing however we go, whichever way the board votes next month, whether we go with a partnership or whether we go with in-house, adding a, a, you know, 22 students a year to the full-day program. So that, and that's something that we could, we could easily do and not strain our other campuses. Oh, yes, sorry. Thank you, I forgot to mention that. You do have a consent item tonight, Item A, on the District of Innovation that I need to pull because we were supposed to have a DEIC vote, and then the ice storm hit last week. And so we did not have a DEIC vote. And so I, of course, you know, the, the board sheets are due so far in advance. I had to assume that we were going to have a vote, and we did not. So we do have, we have rescheduled that meeting, and I've put that on the March agenda already. So please pull Item A. And we are not able to, to bring that to you tonight, I apologize. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Flotus, do we have any citizen input? All right, so our first item of action is approval of minutes. So first discuss and consider the approval of the regular board minutes from our January 24th meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Does anyone have any comments or edits or questions on the minutes?
So it's clean.
All right, all those in favor of approving those minutes? Okay. We also have discussing, consider approval of the special meeting minutes from February 7th, 2022. Is there a motion to approve those?
So moved.
All right, is there a second? All right, any questions or comments on those minutes? All those in favor? Thank you very much. And then our action items, we have Item A, discuss and consider approval of DPH docket number 051 SE 1021.
Yeah, thank you, President Montemayor. Instead of Ms. Shockley standing up.
Like, you're not Ms. Shockley.
She asked me to stand in her place, and so I'm happy to do that. Good evening, and thank you for this time. So this particular action item on the agenda is in regards to the deliberations that we had in closed sessions regarding status in agreement for TEA docket number 051 SE 1021. So the administration recommends the board approve this item as discussed in closed session.
Okay. Is there any, or is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, questions or comments on this item? Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? Are staying? Okay. Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Item B, discuss and consider approval of 2022, 2023 administrator contracts. Ms. Brown?
Thank you, President Montemayor, Mr. Gallier, Board of Trustees. Today, we are bringing to you the superintendent's recommendations, contract recommendations that he makes annually for administrator positions, those at the level of principal and above, to the Board of Trustees. This was submitted to you under separate cover yesterday. And so the administration recommends approval of the 2022, 2023 administrator contracts as submitted.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any questions or comments on this list of contracts? Okay, all those in favor are approved? All right, motion passes, thank you very much. I think you stay up again for, consider, discuss and consider approval of 2022, 2023 FTEs for district growth needs, growth and needs.
Yes, thank you, President Montemayor. So Board of Trustees, this evening, we are bringing to you the culmination of several weeks of work, several, probably even months of work, from the campus level to the cabinet level. We have brought, we have done, gone through the process of putting out the call for requests to our district and campus administrators for FTEs. Rationale and justification had to be submitted for the requests that were submitted or that were presented to us. And then we went through the process of really, a really thorough vetting process and question asking and prioritization process. And so with that, we have kind of pared down and are bringing to you tonight for consideration the most critical needs of the district. And so I'm going to talk you through those. We've categorized them into three different categories. Category one is program services to students and staff. The second group are special populations growth. And the third group is classroom teacher growth. And, and these are all positions. This is kind of all information that we talked through at our boardwork study. And so we're going to kind of move through it a little bit quickly. So this is the first category, the first group of, of FTEs, program services to students and staff. So we are bringing for consideration two social workers. The social worker requests would be at the high school. And this would be to serve our students, and these would be certified social workers. So they would be able to do all, provide all the services that social workers do, including house visits and working with our students on the kind of social, emotional spectrum. We are also bringing two instructional coaches for consideration. These also would be at the high school level for a couple of our content areas, those being Ealar and math. Also, an intervention counselor. This would be an intervention counselor at the middle school level. Currently, we have one intervention counselor that's serving both middle schools. This additional position would then be able to have one intervention counselor at each of the two middle schools. Coordinator for Human Resource Services. As our staff has grown, excuse me, as our student population has grown exponentially, so therefore also has our staff population. And with the Human Resource Office touching every single staff member multiple times throughout their careers in Little Elm ISD, we have a definite need for additional staff in the HR office. Additionally, in the program services category is our Assistant Athletic Director request. This is a position that we have had in the past here in our district. And currently, we have this, we do have this position, but it's tied to the head football coaching position. So this request is to separate them and have two different positions, a head football coach, and then separately, an assistant athletic director, as it has been in the past. The next position request is for Student Information System Specialist. This is, as our district tries to really just kind of catch up to 2023 and really be more digital, this position would focus on that specifically with this software that we have, that's Laserfish software with our DocuNav contract that we, that we have a partnership with DocuNav. So this person would be an onsite person who would help us with our digitization process of our student records and some of our business records and, and with records retention as well. The next group, this is a, this is a second slide for program services. This is the same category of positions. These are, we're requesting a Level 1 technician. You know, our technicians are the folks who go to the campuses and work in the classrooms with this, they, they complete help desk tickets, that type of thing, work with teachers with their devices and students with their devices. We're also requesting an athletics financial paraprofessional. With a 6A athletic program, we certainly have a lot of, of needs and a lot of expenditures that have to be taken care of. And we currently have one person that's doing a really mammoth job. And so we're requesting another position to assist with that. Two custodians, obviously maintaining our facilities is important. And really, that, that applies to the next two, two requests as well, the HVAC specialist as well as the maintenance specialist and making sure that our facilities are presentable for, for our staff, our students, and for our public and our community. And then finally, in this category, an attendance secretary at the high school. Currently, attendance is a job that's kind of split amongst all the House Secretaries. And with attendance and ADA being so very important to our income and our district's revenue, as well as just making sure that students are present to learn. So we want to make sure that there's a dedicated person to really focus in on that. The next category of, of positions is special populations growth. So you guys heard from Mr. Gacius last month with our demography reports and the really exponential growth that we're seeing in our student population. So, you know, when we have exponential student growth, obviously, there's going to be a lot more students that are coming to us with special needs. And so we definitely have to support and be ready for, to address those additional students that are coming to us. So these positions are for the special populations, this department of our district. One of them is for a coordinator of special populations. The district support system really is being taxed currently. And we don't have a lot of district support staff to, to meet the needs of the campuses. And so this coordinator would help with that significantly. Two behavior specialists to work with the campuses. And that some of those, Dr. Mika kind of referenced some of the behaviors that we're kind of seeing as a result of COVID and the, the kind of in and out of schooling that's been happening with kids. So these two behavior specialists would work with our special population students who are having some of those behavior difficulties. The next two on the list are kind of a package, they kind of go together. So our structured learning classroom is currently maxed out. We need, so we need to create a new structured learning classroom at the elementary level. But whenever you have a new classroom, you have to have a teacher and two aides to support that classroom. So those two, those next two are together. Then a dyslexia therapist, excuse me, again, dyslexia population is increasing exponentially over the years. And then finally, an instructional coach that is, that would focus on special education, but would really work with our general education instructional coaches. If you'll recall, last year, we, we brought forth and approved several instructional coaches for the middle and, excuse me, elementary and middle schools. So this would be an instructional coach from the SPED world, but that would work in tandem with those general education instructional coaches and receive the same trainings that those folks receive. The final category of positions is campus growth positions. So Dr. Mika had referred tonight in her previous presentation that we opened two new pre-K classrooms this year, but we did not staff them with aides. You might have heard her say those two pre-K classrooms had to be at an 11 to 1 ratio because they didn't have aides. So as we look forward into next year, we know that those pre-K classrooms are going to grow. We're not going to be able to hold them to 11 to 1, so we're going to need aides for those two classrooms. That is one for Oak Point and one for Brent, for those pre-K aides. Excuse me, elementary teachers, three of them we're requesting. We do have kind of a formula and several spreadsheets. And with the projected growth from, and I should say that all of these positions are specifically related to student growth and the formulas that we use from, and the projections that we have from our demographer, Templeton. So three elementary teachers, we will need additional as, as we look at the growth that Templeton's projecting for us to have for the 22, 23 school year. Last year, you might recall, we gave three new, we gave additional specials teachers at Oak Point. So we had additional arts and additional music and an additional, what, PE, thank you, those three. What we did not do was bring another request for an additional instructional technology assistant. And really, the instructional technology assistant is in that specials rotation and, and probably, and should have been brought last year. So we're going back and kind of trying to correct that for going forward into next year. At the secondary level, 17 secondary teachers. This is directly again related to the student growth from our, and the projections from our demographers. At the secondary level, we definitely want to take into consideration when we have coaches that are doing athletic periods and aren't in the classroom doing, you know, social studies or science. And so in our formulas, we included that this year. So 17 teachers is what we need in order to maintain an average of 25 to 1 or 26 to 1 at those secondary campuses. And finally, a new house office at the high school. So that's three positions kind of packaged together there. That would be an assistant principal, also known as a house principal, a counselor, and a secretary. So those all in total on your board sheet, the, you know, it's approximation, but we partnered up with the business office. And so the approximate total for these new positions would be 2.9 million. So in summary, LEISD is a fast-growth district. And based on enrollment projections from our demographer, we are expected to increase in student enrollment by almost 400 students for this upcoming school year. Based on this projected growth and district campus level support service that are needed to support that growth, we're requesting the FTEs that I just went through. And the way that it kind of sums up is that we're requesting 15 new FTEs for program services to students and staff, eight new FTEs for special populations growth, and 26 new FTEs for campus growth. So with that, the administration recommends approval of So with that, the administration recommends approval of district growth and needs FTEs for the 22, 23 school year as presented.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There, Dan.
There a second?
May.
All right, questions?
I think this is the most I've ever seen come through a request for us, you know? It's pretty awesome. I think, I wasn't there on Thursday, so I apologize, but kudos to administration and to my peers for putting this together. We've needed this for a very long time and, and I'm, I'm excited about these positions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flores.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor? All right, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, now we have discuss, discuss and consider approval of the financial reports for December 2021. Mr. Weiss?
Good evening Superintendent Gallagher, President of Montmorel and Trustees. I got the privilege of presenting the financial reports tonight. Fairly straightforward this evening. We're not presenting any budget amendments for general fund tonight. So there's no financial impact and no expected impact on fund balance. Board policy requires that we keep at least 24% of our total annual operating expenditures in fund balance, which is about 20.1 million. So we're exceeding that, so we're well on track there. And our capital outlay fund, what you see here tonight is updated as of January 31, and all projects are on track from a budget perspective. And we have about $28 million left in approved project, project dollars. For debt service fund, as you can see, we've realized almost all of our forecasted revenue. We've made part of our debt service payments here in, in February, and we're on track. We've realized expenditures, so we'll be able to pay our bonds off no problem this year. There's no expected impact right now on fund balance in the, in the debt service fund either. And the administration recommends approval of certain December 2021 financial reports as submitted.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Any questions on these reports? All right, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries, thank you very much. All right, next we have discuss and consider approval of the resolution to authorize administrative response to winter weather emergency.
Good evening, Board. Before I present my item, I just wanted to say happy birthday to Dr. Thompson and thank you for your dedicated service to be here with us on your birthday. Thank you to all the board for being here every month. The item that I'm bringing forth to you today is really addressed in our District of Innovation, but also in our policy, in our DEA local. And so as you're aware, we had some bad weather events that caused us to, for the safety of students and staff to, to cancel school. And as you're also aware, we no longer go by the number of days of service for instruction, but the number of instructional minutes. And so as, as both of the aforementioned policy and innovation plan allow for, we were to bring you a resolutions that would not require our staff to make up those days that are not required for students. So students made up one of the instructional days and obviously staff were here for that, but there's not a need for students to make up the other days that we missed. And so we don't have a need for the staff to come, but we asked the board to approve a resolution to finalize that.
Okay, do I, does a particular resolution need to be read or just?
I don't, you do not need to, read it, it's in your board book and has a lot of the, the legal language of the whereas and therefor's. But in summary, it is, it is reading that you would exempt the, the, all, all of the staff from needing to come and make up those days.
So is there a motion to approve the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
All right, any questions or comments on that? Now, so my question, does this, this includes last week's day?
Yes, it does. And so, yeah, there, there was one minor change, but it doesn't, the resolution addressed it as day or days. And so a, a, as Cindy mentioned earlier, our board materials do really early, and so we had not missed that day at that point. So on your board agenda item, I reference day in singular, but in the resolution, we had accommodated for days in there. So the resolution that you passed accommodates for, for those.
Okay. Is there?
And hopefully we're done with bad weather for this year.
So I'll get, any other questions, comments? All those in favor? Motion carries, thank you. And then we have discuss and consider approval of professional service proposal from Corgan. Mr. Martin?
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Thank you for letting me do this. This is in regards to the expansion of the welding lab at the high school. If you're familiar with that layout, there's a weight room adjacent to the, to the existing lab. By virtue of us being able to downsize that weight room because we're adding one in the indoor, we are, have proposed to take the two new classrooms that are needed for the welding lab, take them, take half of that space out, put them in there. That way we can expand into the current classroom, the rest of the welding lab. We can double the size of the, of the welding lab itself. We have to have construction documents to do that. I would expect to be able to bring this, the full budget for that project back to you next month, either March or April. It's a small job. Corgan's gathered information, they just need to get the work done. So this is a proposal from them for the $35,000 for their fixed fee to do that, and then another five for any additional services that we, things we run across when we start opening things up and any reimbursables. So the administration recommends approval of the proposal as presented and authorize the superintendent or is designated to negotiate and execute the required contract.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on this one?
Yeah, Rick, is the funding coming out of bond or budget?
This is one of the line items in the current bond.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that's where it's coming out of.
Yes.
From the standpoint of equity, because the original plan was the weight room out in the multipurpose facility is going to be used for boys athletics. The girls were going to use the inside one?
No, ma'am. The current, current thought used for that is that the indoor sports, boys and girls, would use the one that's at the high school. And all the outdoor sports, boys and girls, and it's been set up that way in the locker rooms and everything, would use the one outside, the new one.
Okay, so are they comparable in size and equipment?
They're, they will be in, in equipment and types of equipment, but not the number of equipment because the numbers of kids doing outside sports is far higher than there is indoor.
Because I just know like right now, there's not enough space for all of the kids in athletics to use, use the weight room, which is why they break apart. Girls have to go to locker and boys have to go to the high school. So right now that we'll have both, will there be enough room for both?
Yes, it's a.
As well as you're taking away space from the current setup?
Yes. I think the short answer to, to all of that is, is yes. Coach Young is confident that we can make that work.
So they won't have to use locker anymore?
Shouldn't.
Put all kids at the high school for athletics?
Shouldn't. That's correct.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so as we discussed earlier, item A needed to be pooled due to timing of prerequisites. But then we also, you know, Dr. Mika, it's okay, wanted to pull items B and C to discuss. Are you able to, to do that on the short notice? Perfect. Yeah, so we can pull items B and C for, for discussion. Yes.
Let me get to those agenda items. So B dealt with the data portal, if I'm correct.
Yes, ma'am.
So many years ago, before I was ever a director, I was still a principal, the state came out and, and said that we, that we had to use the state data portal system. But that if we didn't use it, that we could apply for a waiver. And the state data portal system is very clunky. And anytime a student moves teacher classrooms, we have to hand enroll that student and unenroll the student in every teacher's classroom. And this also happens at the end of the year. So as you know, if you are a teacher, you have access to that student's assessment history for that year. You can look back. So if I am Devon's 12th grade teacher, I can see Devon's history while he's a 12th grade student in my class, and I could see his 11th grade star, you know, all the way down to their assessment history. And that's required by the state. But if Devon leaves my class as a teacher and moves to Mr. Flores's class as a teacher, I no longer have an academic need to see that student's data. Now Mr. Flores does. So that is the, when I say it's clunky, it takes manpower to unenroll and enroll and make sure that we are maintaining those FERPA notices and, and making sure that our student data is correct. So for years, we used to use what was called Eduforia, and we stored all of our state assessment data in it. When we became a one-to-one district, they were not able to maintain our online testing that we were doing. In fact, we crashed the Eduforia system one year. I think that y'all might all remember that during semester exams. And so Eduforia was requesting that we purchase cloud for our semester exams so that we wouldn't crash their system since we were doing so much online testing. So that's when we moved to School City, and we've been in School City for five years now, and it has been a very successful program for us. And so this waiver, you haven't seen this in a while because I only have to do this once every three to five years. And so this, we are up for renewal on that waiver. And so this just says that the system that we choose to use, which is School City now, every, the teachers have access to the data, we're able to keep the students' data, that is teacher specific, only for academic need, and that it meets all of the other statutory requirements outlined, meaning that we have seven years of data stored in that system. So what we did when we moved to School City is we update, uploaded seven years of data into the system. So we do maintain that data. So this allows us to, this waiver allows us to continue using School City as our assessment portal instead of having to use the state assessment portal.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve this waiver for the portal? All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm, I'm the one that asked to be pulled because I, I didn't know what it was for, so I want more information. But was that 2014 when that happened?
It was before I even came into this position. And so I've been in, I was the accountability director in 2011, so it was prior to that as well.
Must have been a separate issue.
Yes.
Dr. Mika, you said three to five years, so you'll need to, is it a set timeframe that we're doing this waiver or is it in general?
It's, it's, the waiver system's not open yet. It doesn't open till July. So this just allows me to, as soon as it opens, hopefully prior to my departure, that I will be able to go in and do all of these waivers. And so for you.
Is it what we request, or will we request a certain timeframe? Or is it, the timeframe will be dictated to us?
It's dictated by TEA.
But we expect three to five years?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor? Motion carries, thank you. And then the item, discuss and consider, consider approval of the application for modified schedule for state assessment testing.
Okay, so this one really, the only time we use this is at the high school. And so this is for those EOC days. We, we, this is once again, one of those waivers that I only have to apply for once every, this one is every three years. And so this allows us on those state assessment days, for example, most seniors do not have to take an EOC. So on the English one day, when we're using so many teachers to give the EOC test, but we're still trying to keep classes going for our other students, this allows us, if needed, and we don't always use it, but this allows us if needed for the next three years to do a late arrival on some of those students that don't have to have that EOC. But we only utilize this at the high school. And I can't tell you if we're going to use it or not because I haven't seen the high schools, they don't have the plans out yet. We have this in place through the end of this year. We have used it the past two years at the high school for late arrivals on those assessment days. It allows us to still get ADA for the students that don't take the assessment.
Is there a motion to approve this waiver? Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments about it? All right, all those in favor? Thank you, Dr. Mika. All right, so I think that's everything. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, or as adjusted by the three items that we took out?
So moved.
I think I heard that first. Okay, with, with the exceptions of items A, B, and C.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Thank you very much. As far as board comments go, I also wanted to say happy birthday to, to Dr. Thompson. I'm glad we, you, you spent the evening with us as opposed to with your family or, or friends or anybody else that you could have been spending it with.
Wow.
I know there's no better place to be than there. I also want to say, Dr. Mika, you know, we just found out that, you know, you are going to be moving, moving on from our district, you know, at the summer, and just wanted to thank you for, for all the, all the work, all the help, all the support over the years. You've been a tremendous resource. You know, I know to all of us, I know I've learned quite a bit from, from our discussions and asking you for information and everything. So I know our loss is Kodiak Alaskas gain, and I'm sure you'll, you'll do great things there, but thank you very much for, for all of your time here. And that's my comments. We still have time, she's not leaving yet. I know, it's summer.
Happy birthday, Monique.
Thank you.
Mr. Gallagher, I was just going to ask if maybe we could get an update on your weekly report this week regarding any hail damage that we may have had in the school district. I have lots of it, so I'm assuming we may have seen some out here, but.
I, I, I can give you that right now, we, unless Rick tells me otherwise, we had one window broken in a temporary over at Hackberry. Is that accurate?
If anything changes, if you just let us know.
Absolutely.
Winter damage, yes. Winter damage.
Winter.
Was there, was there any winter damage? There was one leak or something?
No, I don't think we had any. Not that I'm aware of.
Happy birthday, Dr. Thompson. And Dr. Mika, congratulations very much. I don't want to speak for anyone else, but I think I've known your work with you as longer than anyone in this room right now, since you got your first position here as a principal, if I'm not mistaken. So it's, it's been a long ride, it's been an interesting ride sometimes. I know that I've probably been extremely frustrating for you sometimes, but I just want to say congratulations. It is going to be a loss for us, but a very big gain for Kodiak.
Not goodbye, just congratulations for now, Dr. Mika. Thanks, Dr. Thompson.
Thanks very much. Return. My turn? Happy birthday to you. I, I didn't mind, I, this is, this is something I knew I, that was coming up if they were to me, but next year we gotta work around, gotta work around a little bit. And happy almost birthday. Yeah, see, the birthday club is really in the house, so. So I wanted to actually celebrate the FTEs because I was just, oh, excited to see that very, very much. Thank you, Ms. Brown, for pulling that together. That was a lot. From what I understand, like the buildup from the, the campus level, the figuring out at the campus level, the, that's a lot. But that's such a great effort for our students to be able to look forward to. And now I know the bigger job is like actually feeling, so at least I found some freedom. Found some freedom. Dr. Mika there, so lucky. You know, I think I'm one of the smartest people on earth. You know, I think I'm one of the smartest people on earth. So I just, I'm, I'm excited for you, lucky for them, and I just appreciate all you've done. You, you answer all my questions in such of, just a deep, meaningful way. I appreciate that, that you go beyond a simple answer and you're willing to give me buckets of information. I'm a little tiny bit, tiny bit of a nerd, and I appreciate that. And I can see the long range effects of some of the strategies here. I think, I think the scores will go up. I just feel like you have set us on the course, and I'm a little bit, I just want to say this to you, I'm a little bit sad that you know how the butterfly process, they'll get wings and you have a lot to do with the cocooning. So I, yeah. I understand, as a counselor, I see that sometimes happens to me too, you don't get to see the butterfly, but I want to tell you today, thank you for all of your job.
I just want to remind the board, Dr. Mika will be here next board meeting.
Or to say congratulations.
And the one after that, and the one after that. Board members, thank y'all very much. Staff, thank y'all for staying, and y'all have a great evening.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, 8:18 PM.
You know, all we had to do was not second it, and then she would have had to stay and hang around. Because, because, because.
Money's all in the eye of the beholder.
Because until we second it, we can't vote it.
Why is your mind going there? See, that's the first question. Why is your thought going there?
Well, when we had the, when we had the workshop, I voted no against, against adjourning the meeting just because.
Just because.
I'm going to miss this. I'm getting to the point where I'm. I'm, I'm a short timer.
Check her out.
Alex. I've got two more official meetings.
That's it?
Yeah. Well, no, March, well, no. I keep thinking this is March, but yeah, three. Yeah.
Actually technically, you actually go June too. You actually have to go June too, because they're not inducted until June.